I'd like to call the meeting to order. This evening's meeting of the Concord City Council will be begun with an invocation, first by the Reverend Laurie Savick of Wesley United Methodist Church, followed by an invocation by Imam Jabir Ahmed. Please stand.
I invite you to open your hearts with me. Name above all names, you have generated light from darkness, nurtured abundant life of uncharted variety, and made peace in places of scarcity, bigotry, and greed. Yours is power beyond all before which we are powerless. We come from you and we return to you, and in your unconquerable grace, you have led your people to liberate life by pouring out your power for the sake of compassion. You have made all of us your labor of love. You bear witness today to the inauguration of a new way of leadership and service for those gathered here. Truly, you have entrusted us with stewardship of creation and of the future, of which we have dreamed but not yet seen. Power plays, threats, manipulative influence are no substitute for freedom and democracy. Knowing that you had given everything into his hands, your beloved Jesus knelt before his friends, even those who would betray him, and washed their feet. Your people have cried out for trustworthiness, care, and hard work in their leaders. And so, as Jethro advised Moses, you have called us to work out our own liberation, calling from our own number leaders who are capable, humble, trustworthy, and not corrupt. With your direction, all who are needed for the happiness of the people of Concord have been called. Pour out your Holy Spirit on these leaders here today, that they may love the people of Concord fully, and that theirs may be a labor of love. Grant them the vision to care for those more marginalized, more vulnerable, more disabled than they, and grant them the happiness that Jesus promised for those who do these things. Enliven their pursuit of wisdom, so that in their responsibilities, they may be having fun frolicking in the inhabited earth and delighting in the human race as true wisdom does. Give them faith in one another, that they may rely on each other for trustworthiness, respect, and integrity, that with your direction, they and their leadership will endure. Renew every morning their conviction that every created thing within the boundaries called Concord is lovable and lovely, not only in times of consensus, ease, and acceptance, but even in times of anger, even in dissent, even in confusion, even in disappointment, so that they may, day by day, bring a distant vision of just peace, abundant life, and beloved community near, with curiosity, patience, and partnership. God, we will not let you go until you bless us. Loving God, do not let us go until we have completed the work you called us here to do. In the name of the power higher than Moses, higher than Jesus of Nazareth, higher than Mohammed and all of their disciples, we pray. Amen.
Bismillah wa rahman wa rahim. In the name of God, the most merciful, the most graceful, peace upon you. I will start with what our grandfathers start. We start with what North Washington, our first president started. Almighty, the creator of the universe, the sending of the prophets, Adam, Noah, Ibrahim, Isaac, Jacob, Joseph, Moses, Jesus, Jacob, David, Solomon, and Abraham, and Mohammed. Send all those prophets to show us the way, how to rule, and how to be humble, and how to serve our communities. We are here today to step stones and to follow their steps, to do the thing. Being elected officials, it is an honor, and it is also to be a servant of the people they elect you. Any elegancy, any special interest in your soul, bite it day in and day out, to focus and inspire yourself only to serve the people. This country offers us liberty, freedom, and democracy. That's what our grandfathers put for us, and we should carry that on and move forward for it, to deliver it to our grandchildren when they are ready to take the responsibility. We have a new elected official in the city council of Concord. This is one stone in the big building. Concord, and Massachusetts, and the state, and other states, they all constitute the country of the United States. We bless them, and we ask God to continue to bless us, and bless this country, and bless the whole people of America. Thank you, and I'm going to recite a couple verses of the Quran. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, alhamdulillah. Allah rabbil alamin, ar rahmani rahimin maa'lik yom addin, iyyaka na'budu wa iyyaka nasta'in, inas saraatul mustaqim, saraatalladziina an'amta alaihim, ghairil maghbooba alaihim, waladzaldeen amin. So help me God.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me?
Yes, ma'am.
I Byron Champlin.
I Byron Champlin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I Byron Champlin.
I Byron Champlin.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As mayor for the city of Concord.
As mayor for the city of Concord.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I Byron Champlin.
I Byron Champlin.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As mayor for the city of Concord.
As mayor for the city of Concord.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the city of Concord.
Agreeably to the city of Concord.
Its charter and ordinances.
Its charter and ordinances.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Fortunately, the city council is standing, so those city councils who have to be sworn in, please remain standing, because I have the high honor and privilege of performing that duty. So please raise your right hand, and when I say state your name, please don't repeat that, just state your name. It's a trick, we're going to see if everybody... I state your name.
I do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me as city councillor for the city of Concord.
All the duties incumbent on me.
For the city of Concord.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
I'll make them smaller. Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution and the laws.
Of the Constitution and the laws.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent on me as city councillor.
Incumbent on me as city councillor.
For the city of Concord.
For the city of Concord.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the city of Concord.
Agreeably to the city of Concord.
New Hampshire City Charter.
New Hampshire City Charter.
I messed that one up. And ordinances.
And ordinances.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Concord, this is your new city council. We will now move to nominations for the mayor pro temp. As described in section 13 of the Concord City Charter, the city council shall choose one of its members, mayor pro temp, who shall act in the absence, disability, or vacancy in the office of mayor. We'll be conducting this election according to Robert's Rules of Order. I will now open the nominations for mayor pro temp. I recognize Councilor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to nominate Councilor Ali Sekou for mayor pro temp.
Is there a second? It's moved and seconded. Counselor, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Your Honor. It's my privilege to nominate Councilor Sekou for mayor pro temp. As we know, he is new to city council, but I believe that he will bring much experience and qualifications to the position, and that's based on his work as a consensus builder, representative, and negotiator and leader of the various organizations that he's worked with in the community. He's currently the manager for Community Engagement and Inclusion at the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, where he's organizing and facilitating workshops, trainings, and presentations for the Islamic Society of Greater Concord. He serves as panelist and speaker on issues related to inclusive environments, plans, and executes cultural events, and leads board meetings. He serves as a liaison and advisor to immigrant communities through his service on the New Hampshire Housing Council and the New Hampshire Community Loan Fund. So I believe that all this public speaking and organizational background will lend itself well to mayor pro temp. I'll also note that Councilor Sekou is a graduate of Leadership New Hampshire. He was educated in New Hampshire, at New Hampshire Technical Institute and Plymouth State University, and received his Master's of Arts degree in Community Development Policy and Practice from the University of New Hampshire. He was also selected as one of New Hampshire Union Leaders 40 Under 40, recognizing his leadership skills. So I hope you'll join me in supporting Councilor Sekou for mayor pro temp. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The floor is open for further nominations.
I'd like to... I'm sorry, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Kretsch for the position.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The nomination is seconded. Councilor McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Other than she has been in the community for quite a while, she knows everybody, she works well with people, I think she'd be an excellent... do the job.
Thank you. The floor is open to further nominations. Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are now closed. We'll now vote on the candidates for mayor pro temp. The city clerk will distribute blank pieces of paper for you to use as ballots.
Yes. May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Is this a ranked choice or a majority vote?
This is a majority vote.
Point avoider, Your Honor?
Yes, Counselor.
Per Council Rule Section 7, I would like to request a roll call vote.
This is a ballot vote, Counselor.
So you don't need a roll call.
Right.
I believe we can...
Danielle, would you come up?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. I'm Danielle Passick. I am the deputy city solicitor. For those who have not met me, I did have an opportunity to review the council rules in terms of the procedure for voting for mayor pro temp. They are silent in terms of how that works. So historically, when it is silent, the mayor, under Rule 2, has discretion in terms of deciding the appropriate procedure. In this case, he has decided to use Robert's Rules of Order, and so in those situations, Roberts does talk about doing a ballot, and so we do think it's appropriate. May I?
Thank you.
May I?
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I'm referencing Council Rule Number... Section 7. Yep. Which states that any member may request... may call for a roll call vote.
Yep, so that would be, if you were doing a voice motion, then you would be able to do a roll call, but where a procedure for using a ballot has been chosen, there would be no roll call in that situation.
Thank you, Danielle. Danielle. Please write down the name of your choice for mayor pro temp. And the city clerk will pick up your ballot.
I'm so... I'm sorry. What a crazy day.
That was mine?
Yes.
I just don't want to vote again.
Sorry. What a crazy day I've had.
You didn't vote if you're not sworn in?
I just signed it.
Oh, gotcha. I'm sorry. Surely. Counselor Schultz, would you stand while I...
Oh, my gosh. I am so sorry. This is a little embarrassing.
I'll note that you did sign the form, so this is the formality.
I did.
All right. State your name when I say state your name. I state your name.
I Christina Schultz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
I normally don't say that part. I apologize.
All right.
I do believe in God.
I state your name.
I Christina Schultz.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent on me as city councillor for the city of Concord.
Incumbent upon me as city councillor for the city of Concord.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire. I feel like I've... She can say that instead. Just this I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. This I do under the pains and penalty of perjury.
And this I do under the pains and penalty of perjury.
Thank you. I state your name.
I Christina Schultz.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear, I believe, and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent on me.
All duties incumbent upon me.
As city councillor.
As city councillor.
For the city of Concord.
For the city of Concord.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the city of Concord.
Agreeably to the city of Concord.
New Hampshire.
New Hampshire.
City charter and ordinances.
City charter and ordinances.
This I do under the pains and penalty of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalty of perjury, and I apologize. Yay! I just did that to be special, I guess. I apologize for that.
Your Honor, I stand with Mr. Sekou.
I'm sorry?
May I stand with Counselor Sekou?
Oh, absolutely, if you wish.
Would you like me just to read these out loud as I tally them? There is one vote for Counselor Kretsch. Counselor Kretsch. Counselor Sekou. Counselor Sekou. Counselor Sekou. Counselor Sekou. Counselor Kretovic. Counselor Kretovic. Counselor Sekou. So sorry, I can't unfold the last one here. Counselor Sekou. So it's nine for Counselor Sekou and six for Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Your opportunity to say a few words.
I want just to take this opportunity to say I am honored and humbled by this decision that all of you honored, honorable counselors just made for me. And I thank Byron, the City, and the City Solicitor for organizing this election. And sorry, guys, I'm being a little...
It's okay.
But I am honored, and I am going to serve Concord as I have always done, and I'm continuing to serve the community as I always have done. And it's a great honor, and I am asking all of you guys, support, to please guide me, support me, as they stated. I'm new to this role, but as I said many times, if I can learn English, I can learn anything, because that's the hard part. Thank you all, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. And now we have an opportunity for the newly-elected City Councilors to make personal remarks. We'll start with Ward 1. We'll go around the table. Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. Of course, I am once again very honored and privileged and grateful to the voters and the community in Ward 1 for once again having faith in me to serve as their representative. And we have, I think, accomplished a lot. I look forward to continuing to do that as we go forward into the new year. And I know we have some very talented counselors that are joining us here now, who I welcome. And I will enjoy getting to know you better and working with you so that we can continue to make some great accomplishments. I would not really be able to sit here if it weren't for the support of my family, my two children, and my wife, Althea. Yeah. My wife, Althea, who is out there in the... there she is. And, you know, I think I've said this before, but I've always felt that... I've asked her, I've said, "Althea, you know, really, you should be the counselor. You're smarter than I, you're more talented." And...
You say that, too.
My point, exactly.
I was trying to be polite.
In fact, the fact that she always says... No, I'm not going to do that. It proves the point, who is smarter among us. But I couldn't be here without her, especially her dedication and devotion, and allowing me to spend multiple, multiple hours at meetings and be away and reaching in for me wherever possible. So I really very much appreciate that. Thank you. And again, I think I'm looking forward to a wonderful term on council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Horne.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the constituents of Ward 2. I truly appreciate each and every vote, the conversations that we've already had, and the faith that they had in me to serve in their best interest. I would like to thank my friends and my family who have supported me and encouraged me endlessly to undertake this challenge. I'm excited to have been sworn in tonight and to be able to start the hard work. I still hold to the promises that I made my candidacy to be open, communicative, and transparent to the community members and to my fellow counselors. I'm excited to work with you all, and I will keep moving forward with you all to start keeping with the amazing community that we already have going.
Thank you, Your Honor. Unfortunately, I have lungitis, so I'm going to be very brief. Grateful to have been voted at the table again. Congratulations, Ollie. We're super excited to have you in your leadership role at this table and looking forward to serve with you. And I can't forget my husband, who came here tonight and drove me. Thanks for coming and thanks for all your support to our community. Let's do some good work.
I continue to be humbled and grateful to my constituents who have voted me in for a second term, and grateful to the city staff and all of the workers who make this city as great as it is. People tease me because when it's that time of the season, I do enjoy going out and going door-to-door, and people think I'm a little nuts, but that's the part I like best. I love hearing from my constituents, learning their needs. They teach me a lot, and I'm grateful that we have all these new faces here because they're fresh eyes and they have fresh ideas, and that keeps us vibrant. So I'm so excited that we're all here. So thank you to the City of Concord and to my husband, who supports me and listens to me. I think he's here.
He's here.
I'm grateful, first of all, to my family and my friends, for the voters of Ward 5 for re-electing me to serve as their representative. I'm looking forward to working with my council colleagues and the stellar staff to end homelessness in Concord, attain our sustainability goals, and ensure equitable access to resources for all our residents.
I am very... I'm delighted and honored to be here. I'm deeply grateful to all of my friends and my family, my husband and my children, and my family by choice, the friends in Concord who adopted me when I became a transplant here, and who supported me in learning about the community and becoming engaged. I'm deeply grateful to the voters, and I will work very hard to do what I've always done, which is to learn and listen in every new situation I'm in and focus on what's best for our community together. And I just want to express a great deal of gratitude to the counselors around the table for welcoming me and for offering their advice to me as I find my way in this new role. So thank you very much.
First, I want to thank the voters of Concord who blessed me with a second term. Thank you very much for placing your trust in me again for four more years. I would like to congratulate Mayor Champlin. I think that's the first time I can actually say that officially.
I think it's the first.
And I'd like to also congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Sekou. I would like to thank my family. My wife is in the audience, three boys, Connor, Patrick, and Sean. I'd like to thank them for all the help that they provided me this fall. I had to say, I really enjoyed knocking on doors with them. It was great. So thank you.
I want to thank everybody and my husband. He's always here. He brings me to every meeting because I can't drive.
The best chauffeur in Concord.
And everybody else for voting for us, and I'm working. I'm enjoying working with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank the voters of Ward 7 for allowing me to serve as their counselor. I stand on the shoulders of many who've gone before me, but none larger than the outgoing Counselor Keith Nye. Keith Nye ably served Ward 7 for 18 years. He steadfastly kept the needs of the Ward residents at heart and demonstrated a strong commitment to fiscal conservatism, working to balance the needs of city staff and infrastructure with the sometimes difficult realities of our tax-paying residents. It's an honor and a privilege to succeed him in this role. I would also like to thank the many folks who helped me with my campaign, the canisters and sign holders that make grassroots campaign possible. Envising our ward allowed me to meet so many wonderful new neighbors and to learn the depths of civic commitment and betterment in our city. I would also like to thank my wife, Lori, who's here with me tonight, who has been steadfast in supporting and encouraging me to live out our shared values of equity, collaboration, communication, and leadership. Concord is blessed with an amazing array of dedicated city staff, police officers, fire personnel, general services staff, administrators, and managers. It's not always easy to be a public servant. I have worked for 40 years in public sector health care and know the challenges and the immense rewards of public service. I commit to doing my best to serve Concord's civil servants as they serve the residents of Ward 7 and our city. I see the work before us as facilitating open and honest dialogue about the challenges we face and the inevitable choices we must make. Who pays and who benefits will be a perennial dilemma. Thoughtfully marshaling the city's budget and crafting sound policy are the tools we wield. I truly believe that we can use these tools to consciously evolve our community, work for all residents, a community that is ever more aligned with our shared values: safe streets, sustainable development, stewardship of our environment, homes for the homeless, and care for the less fortunate. I look forward to working effectively with our city manager, with you, Mr. Mayor, and with the other city counselors, and ask for your help and forbearance as I learn the details of our governance system. I am grateful for the trust placed in me to represent Ward 7, and I'm proud to make the most of my turn at serving our wonderful city. Thank you.
Wow, this is hard to follow, Jen. It's my honor and a pleasure to sit today with this great body and again to thank you guys for the trust you place in me. I am looking forward to working with all of you guys to advance this great city that we all love, we care, and we choose to make home. I'm a father of two. My beautiful wife and my two children are in this building, so without them, I won't be doing what I'm doing now. She always said, "Go do what you are asked to do. You are always the community servant and go serve." So she's taken care of the two beautiful children we have, so I'm very grateful for that. I'm also grateful for Gail Mattson, who believed in me, who supported me, who shared his expertise and experience with me. And I'm very grateful for the city manager and Byron Champlin, that has been good mentors and leaders that always shared and welcomed me to this city. I want to thank everybody here today, Tom Rafiu, the B-Sonnet, everybody from Sandwich, New Hampshire, to people who live in Concord today. Sorry, I cannot name everybody, but I know you are all here today. So thank you for your support. Thank you for accepting and welcoming us in this great community that we are going to put everything we've got to work for. I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and please, I said it many times, I'm humbled here to know that I don't know what I don't know. Follow me, share what you see, let's make Concord... let's put Concord first, and let's work for the City of Concord. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
And you thought Councilman Schlosser was hard to follow. I'm just deeply grateful and honored to serve the people of Ward 9, and it has been the honor of my lifetime to serve at the State House on behalf now of Wards 9, 10, and 4, and to now follow Councilwoman Candace Bouchard is just amazing. She has tough shoes to fill, and I will do the best job that I can. I will say one thing that I hope explains a little bit, you know, what I stand for, what my campaign stood for, and that is the notion of "Love your neighbor." And some of you may remember, and I think some of you still have the bumper stickers and the T-shirts, predominantly led by New Americans and the Interfaith Council, "Love your neighbor" was the slogan that a lot of us adopted to stand up to what we saw as bigotry and hatred when there were some incidences that were very difficult. I think that's what I love most about Concord is how much this community cares about each other and stands up against hate, but more importantly, also stands strongly in that "Love your neighbor" spirit, and I hope that's how I always come to this service. And if I don't, I hope you'll call me out on it. I'll also add, my husband has the flu, and I didn't know that until about an hour ago, so I apologize for the weirdness of my arrival today. And like I said, do call me out on it, but it is my intention to be of service and to come to this with the understanding that I'm not representing myself, I'm representing my ward, and I hope that I can make Ward 9 proud. So thank you.
Well, I guess there's not a lot to say for me because I think we've covered it all, but, you know, family. We all mentioned family, and I heard the slogan. I'm not a politician. When I decided to do this, I had a conversation with my wife of 34 years, who's here tonight, and started knocking on doors, and quickly I understood that it wasn't about me, it was about her, because every time I knocked on a door, they'd say, "Are you Cindy Foote's husband?" Short of that, a lot of guidance from a lot of people in this room. Really appreciate Mayor Champlin and many people in this facility tonight. One of the things that, you know, I ran on, and I hope we can all agree upon, is, you know, our quality of life in this community, and those are the type of things that I intend to pursue. You know, I've mentioned it 100 times, police fire, public works, recreation, those are transportation, clean energy, solid waste, you know, those are all challenges that we're going to face that's going to cost this community a lot of money. We need to make good choices, and I'm really looking forward to collaborating with each one of you to do that. And again, I can't thank my family enough. I can't thank the voters of East Concord and Ward 10. I'm not a politician. This has been a great experience for me, being on the campaign trail, seeing a lot of people I hadn't seen in years, and it's very encouraging. And you have, you know, one Concord, and it's about Concord, and I can't agree more. I really love this community, and I'm really looking forward to moving this community together forward. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda are the remarks by the mayor. I'd like to start my remarks by thanking the voters of Concord for the faith they placed in me by electing me the city's 57th mayor. It's hard for me to believe that the number is that low, and that makes me doubly proud. I'm deeply touched by your confidence, and I will work hard for you the next two years. I also want to thank the volunteers who worked so selflessly on my campaign and without whose efforts we could not have been successful. You were amazing. Finally, and importantly, excuse me, my... Finally, and importantly, excuse me, my deep love and appreciation goes to my family, in particular, my wife Susie, without whose support and encouragement I could neither run nor serve. And I'm very proud that Susie and our daughters, Emma and Madeline, and my brother Greg, my little brother Greg, are all in the audience tonight, and I hope that my aunt Betty in Rhode Island and my cousin Betty Jo and my family down there are managing to watch this on YouTube. As I step into this new role, I aspire to be a mayor for all of Concord, for the state worker, the teacher, and the firefighter living in the South End, for the health care worker and sales associate working in Pennacook, for the new American and the auto mechanic on the Heights, for the retired physician and the professional living on the West Side. I believe we must weigh all their interests in our decision-making. During my 10 years on city council and in this past election, I have heard clearly from Concord residents that they want us focused on the following five areas, and I encourage each of us to ask if what we are doing around this table helps address them. First, creating economic opportunity. Second, securing public safety. Third, addressing the national housing affordability crisis that has especially impacted Concord. Fourth, investing in critical needs like infrastructure and our workforce with sound financial management in mind. And finally, respecting the burden that Concord property taxpayers face, sometimes due to forces outside this council's control. As I've said before, a major focus of my term will be economic development. Concord must be competitive in retaining the businesses we have and attracting new investment in our community. It is not just jobs, opportunity, and tax-based expansion that will be created. A vibrant economy also contributes greatly to the quality of life in our city. To this end, I am creating an Economic Development Advisory Committee to work with the city's Community Development Department to help identify emerging opportunities as well as any weaknesses in our current strategies. I further plan to work with Community Development and the Concord Chamber to reinstitute the mayor's Business Visitation Program to hear firsthand the challenges our businesses and developers face. We need to be smart and strategic in this area. Supporting this initiative will be an ongoing focus to add housing stock to our city, to ensure that we have the worker base to sustain business development as well as sufficient affordable housing to ensure that no resident need be without shelter. As homelessness is a national crisis with a neighborhood impact, we will seek national models and local partners to address it. We will be working on quality of life issues such as maintaining and creating recreational and cultural opportunities, but also, also, on ensuring that Concord is truly a place where everyone feels that they belong and can succeed and contribute to the success of the community. Since an important aspect of life quality is the degree to which one feels secure, we will be attentive to continuing to recruit top-quality police and firefighters while giving them the tools they need to keep us safe. This includes pursuing the best way to provide a home for the Concord Police Department, which meets the needs of modern law enforcement and also ensures that the department achieves national certification. I heard clearly from voters that they want us to invest wisely in the priorities I just listed, while also being sensitive to the burden placed on property taxpayers in our city. While affordable housing and homelessness are a challenge throughout New Hampshire, Concord can continue to lead. But we should not have to shoulder this issue alone. Our state government and neighboring communities need to do their share. This city council will face challenges and opportunities such as these, which we can anticipate, but there is no doubt that other challenges will arise unexpectedly. How we face those will test our mettle. We are a small city with a big heart, one city with shared ambitions and values. We want to be safe, we want to prosper, we want respect. I believe we can all agree on these roles, goals. Our challenge as a council will be how we work together to deliver on these aspirations. Each of us comes to this table with individual passions and priorities. At the same time, our constituents expect us to focus on the core responsibilities of city government, public safety, a healthy economy, sound infrastructure, efficient city services, and sound fiscal management. Everything else we do rests on this foundation. As we move forward in the next two years, I ask the city council to approach issues in flexible and collaborative ways. There will not always be consensus, but we should strive toward that goal. Our constituents expect it of us, and I will try to lead us there. There will inevitably be moments when our opinions diverge on matters of policy. When that happens, I ask you to take a moment to step into the other person's shoes. Consider that you may be only partially right, or perhaps even wrong. Look to where our positions intersect with each other, and most importantly, intersect with the public good. There is an immense amount of talent on this city council and a great deal of love for our city, what it is and what it can be. I look forward to working with all of you in the months ahead to build towards that vision. Thank you. That concludes, that concludes this evening's agenda. I have a motion to adjourn from Mayor Pro-Tam Seku, and I have a second from Councillor Kretovic. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it. City councillors, please remain for a photograph by the city staff.